All right, we'll call the. Meeting for order for. We can all stand and.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Sill. Councilmember Penello.
Present.
Remember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson reported out. Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Thank you.
Can you hear okay back there with the fan going? Can you hear okay with my. If you have more in silence. Interactions. Thank you. Proclamation and presentations, we have. October ninth through the fifteenth is our fire prevention week. Do it with that.
Resolved, I Scott State Mayor of the city of Portland, we hereby proclaim October ninth to the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. As fire prevention week throughout the city. I urge all the people of Portland, plan and practice a home fire escape for fire prevention week two thousand twenty-two. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Portland Fire Department.
They got a motion for proclamation one. Sir Carpenter. Mr. Beckwith. My favorite.
Hi.
I think it's important to recognize that. You know, how many fires and deaths there are, how important it is to have a fire department, how much they do for us. So hopefully, they're very patient, make their plans and do their designs. Their exit plans and giving places and all that, those are all important. Times that we spend with our kids when they want as well. Privileges of the floor, has anybody signed up? Not. No, okay, thank you. Mayor's reports. I'll start with the police department, the police department put on three officers that are on their own now, so these are the officers that we signed up, and we did remember we sent them in, which is awesome and. It's a great success, they have won the NADIWI rest this weekend. And some of the other ones have really been hit hard. Alyssa Ferguson, the other ones have really done a great job, so all three had to have, they really did hit the ground line and. I was talking to one of the sergeants the other day, he said, what a pleasure it is how sharp these guys are. Man, and I'm grateful, so that's great to hear. We'll start citizens, our citations and words for other officers next meeting, that. Together, also recognition, they would do them typically as one big group, if we were to separate it, we'd be better to do them independently and do it less, more of the time that we've done. So we're looking forward to that. We had one officer, Bush, who was on our school of Portland, and that was shared everywhere, it's like playing cornhole with some college kid, which is always good to have that with it. Interaction with the students, which was great. September twenty-ninth, we're bringing an officer in that has phase one already done, and this is first at their academy, so that makes them be available to be on the road on February. But we're making great headway and great progress and moving things along with each other. Certainly, we've been taxed with the students coming back and getting the educational system for noising and all that, but I saw three noise complaints this weekend. It's pretty good in my game, so it's been positive, the direction that the police department and fire department have been communicating with them, so far so good. Fire departments, they've always always had something exciting going on there, but the their road, we have a road closure in front of the fire department on. October first, and that's their open house, so we'll make sure that we get over that, and it's also part of the pumpkin fest, so it'll be rotated over. The pumpkin fest, and we see we see this is gonna have something in place. The pumpkin test is the first and second of October, which is before and it's new. I. Youth Bureau, so the painting has started at that, so our washing is gone, and it's prepared to being done. United Way Day of Caring is tomorrow, and. They're doing some work at the Bowery Building and some repair work over there at Lehman Park as well. So we have. City Good Girls, Topen, Zero, people are working on these projects. InterTech, sending people to Portland, United Way, Mayor Properties. So that's that's going on tomorrow, so if anybody's out about, there's a chance to go by there sometime in the morning, you can stop by and say, we appreciate you for that. Mayor's conference was last week, learn some more about the ARP funding directly. And talk about the new A and D is going to an AFR document, which is annual update document, it's going to the annual financial report document. And accounting for the capital and trust agency account, which will be in our budget this year, so we're recommending that, so those are all. Information and stuff that we got to, which is good. Construction on Main Street and putting that up, so Main Street is. A slow standstill. The some of the engineering, where the engineering was designed, where things were located, once it started, we go get started on those aspects, we're not where they thought they were. They had to re-engineer it, so they wanted to do another aspect of the construction and found out wasn't where it was supposed to be. So very frustrating for sure, and the delay that we cannot afford when we started, so. So that process is, we think that we have on fact of action plans to try to get this addressed, and we're working on getting that. I claim that, similar to the same, a different aspect is, so there's been some changes over there, and some duck bank as of yesterday, some electrical stuff, and those green lines are being redesigned and configured. Contractor delay and not getting enough manpower there seems to be the delay there, so that process is going slower, so likely not to have it completely finished, we will have a pay by the end of this year. But it's gonna push, it's gonna definite push, so DPW, they worked hard to try and get this to happen, and we can try to make this stuff happen. Last night, September twenty-ninth is a job fair for Boyant Beauty, that is the twenty-ninth, it'd be a great community outreach to do that, it's very likely that there's no. Positions to be had, but we're actually turning down agencies that are not from the Portland community or from county areas, so we're local first, and have that, because there is so many businesses that are on top. So that's good, and so it's also, it'll be a preempt to having another job fair later date. That's what I have him on, mayor.
Where's the job?
The job fair is gonna be held on Central Ave, in front of Boyant.
And mayor, I assume all of that information is on the web, so.
I will, yes, we're finished, we just finished those dialogues yesterday, and so we're getting all that details right now. But all their employees will know, and that's. They have not agreed to necessarily bring in all the pockets, so. Hey, any other questions?
All right, ward reports. Ward one had a phone call this week about speeding in the area. Woke up early one morning, went over, observed the two vehicles, I was told. Doing exactly what I'm told they do, passed along, I believe the police department will be taking care of that pretty quick. The other concern was the new rubbish program, I had a couple seniors ask about snowbanks, how they thought they were gonna get their garbage to where it went. And tried to lay their mind at ease about everything, we completely finalized yet, let them know where we were, and it's, you know, it became a serious problem. To get a hold of me, and if I have to on a snowy day, they're a block and a half away, we'll come figure it out. Which brings us to my first positive, rubbish, I got a phone call this week commending us on changing the program, getting rid of the boot bags, and switching it over to something new. Went through all the details that we had discussed in the last meeting, individuals were very happy that we were finally doing it, so. And then paving was another positive, the fact that we're getting some streets done that hadn't been planned originally in the ward, and that they've been coming along so fast. Had a very, very good conversation in the park with a gentleman, and just happened to recognize me and pull me aside and tell me he thought we're doing a good job, so. They, good job with DPW again, they're they're happy about paving, so things seem to be going pretty well in the ward. You know, I'm watching the stoplights, thank you again for making them the executive decision for those flash stoplights, getting that done, I'm watching people stop where they never used to stop before. People are noticing the traffic pattern of that area is different, problem is we're about two blocks away, and we think we're race strip, so. We're we're gonna get that taken care of, I'm pretty sure Mr. Sanders got that well, well.
Mr. Solomon?
Second ward.
Can you go on your mic a little closer?
Sure. So then the second ward, we've had some voice issues on weekends and Thursday nights lately, but please have been vocal. I want to thank two of my constituents who've been cleaning up parts of Ward two and three, one of them. Was Saturday or Sunday morning. Picked up a big trash bag full of cans and bottles, just going down to the Y from Westport. I attended the nine eleven ceremony and listened to a very sweet remembrance. Of a man about his childhood friend, who had died due to illness and complications brought on by his significant plan of nine eleven, and that was very moving, there's a lot of patchy to the fire department, it was out, stay loose for how, please pardon me, it was out. I appreciate it. Chief Sandy's. Taken at home organizing event. The people on Chuywood Street have to be happy to be getting their street paid, I had told them that would be another couple years best, and here we are, thank you to DPW. The Elks Club is concerned about a fault that they have under the sidewalk, and Nick Doby and I were discussing that, and he is just going to be discussing it with the people who are in charge of the gateway project, because if we cover it, it's part of that project, so. Hopefully, reach out to the people else and talk about what they want done with that. I have promised to call Bob Rea's citywide sidewalk inventory, and I will send that to you as promised, and I'm hoping we can add it for discussion to the next agenda. So we can talk about sidewalks and talk about the front hall for the public, so they can know. How to report a sidewalk that's a problem. What the repercussions are, if you have a sidewalk that you don't take care of, well, can you help us out there, can you help fixing your sidewalk? I'm without walking at work tonight and trip three times in my short forty minutes walk, and I'm concerned about people. Who might even be a little older than myself and not steady, but they're able to catch themselves. And I was gonna ask, Mr. Nick, if he could come up and just tell us about the lights in West Forest Street, because we reported on this problem several times, and. He is equally frustrated but vocal, I think we can explain it better than I can, what's going on with the. Lighting, how it is on Westport.
Evening, everybody. As. All persons, someone said, we've got some ongoing issues on the Westport area in regards to streetlights, we repaired a bunch of them, there's actually. An accident up there that took one totally out, that one is is now back in, we've done some internal electrical upgrades up there. And also called in, I think it was Dreamers Electric, then also did some work in the area, come to find out, I don't think it's an issue that's DPW or private vendor concern. It's power feed issue at the bottom of the hill, and National Grid was supposed to be there. Today, because of the storm yesterday, they said they couldn't make any guarantees, so I'll follow up with them and make sure that that issue gets rectified. It's basically West Cor, almost all the lights on the north side going up the hill, except for like the last one or two near the town.
And several on the south side, yeah.
So.
Thank you. So we now have an open ticket, and Mr. Doby's gonna get me a phone number to call, and I'm gonna tell National Grid if some of the balls up there, they're gonna sue National Grid and not the city. And that's the end of the second ward's.
Thank you very much.
So third ward, pretty quiet, the situation with Beaver, that the footbridge has been addressed, and that's been solved, and the neighbors are greatly appreciative of that. And I've I've gotta give Nick and Al credit too, I had a call from a constituent a week ago when we had the severe rainstorm. And there was flooding at the end of Bellows in Broadhead, and Al walked over, and the vacuum system was there the next morning, so the Bellows is very appreciative of that. And I also got a few phone calls about the trash and how it's going to change from senior citizens, so, and I said, more information will be coming. Other than that, we're good, we're quiet. Um, I received several complaints about the drop off, with the vision pulling out of Speedway, gas station on Broadway, I guess. I know, it's like, pretty, pretty high, and I spoke to Nick about it, and he's been going to take a look at it. I received a message about people parking on the wrong side of Earl Street, maybe difficult, but down the street, a lot of students park on the right side. And so when anybody parks on the other side, it makes it difficult, I reported that to the police department. Had a constituent contact me about a concern about three, more than three unrelated people in a rental, I talked to Tom Tobin about that. We still have cars speeding into and out of the city, that end of Compton Street. I attended the nine eleven memorial, as did councilperson Scott. And I would like to thank Nick Doby for getting the no parking sign back up in front of two oh one Tompkins, and I would like to thank Louie Adams for keeping us informed about the wastewater testing and for his multiple reports, thank you.
Which is going down, yes, yeah.
All right, thank you. Well, I think America putting out that public notice about flowers on Main Street, or putting that, or giving flowers, they're giving up there, and that was nice, and I got the public, I think the last meeting was to. For needs and stuff like that, it was very important, and I think it's gonna satisfy a lot of people's anger over that, that was nice, thank you. Al, South Companies regarding the water mitigation, which is good, we got several companies that looked at, was to upgrade selection, and I take a lot of their expertise to move in and all that, to put that. And that's all for security.
Few quick things. You know, when the river they clean up, instead of, you didn't bring that up, I do. Because I did, real quick, town, still waiting through the Arnold, Al's Saturday from May eighth ward, it's Saturday ward, so we can still move boss. Better hurry up, we're running out of daylight. And real quick, on a serious note, mentioning about the fire prevention weeks, thirty, almost thirty years in the volunteer fire department enrollment. Why do you do it, Orland? Please be attentive to it, I was in a fire once, and we lost a kid, and it's just tore me up ever since. So if you get a chance to go there, take your kid there to the open house, the fire department, all, they all have, all, every volunteer paid fire department, county, state, all have a fire prevention weeks and same week, so, take your kids there and have them on some. Believe me, and they probably will give you some refreshments and whatever, I'd love to see you, multiple lucky on the trucks, we don't need a new another light, but we're something simple. Yeah, thank you for that, we can't afford to, if the river, now this is set up, okay. Sorry, I, sorry, thank you. Just a. Just a couple things for the eighth ward. I wanna first thank Andrea and Heather as the Youth Bureau, as well as Jen or Librarian for finally making a book box possible, and Courthouse Park. And it's something that, you know, we've been working on since January, and hopefully by Friday, we'll have book backs out there. All that works is that you you take a book and replace it with another one. Now, we also have in the works, some new benches that are proposed to the park. So that that should really start to look pretty good here. At ten snowfog, five. Received a couple of calls regarding an order coming from our wastewater facility, I took the time this week to meet with Bruce. And we went over what we think is the suspect of where the owner's coming from, and we're looking closely to. To resolve this issue. Last, last item is that, I believe the last meeting I mentioned, can we move on east air? My understanding that National Grid plans on using this tree as a as a learning tool for. New arborist trimming tree, so looking forward to seeing this move, and I'm sure the homeowners are looking forward to getting it removed. And that's all I have for the night, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving to agenda items, agenda item number one. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got a motion for a two minutes, consulting on the signal, any? Mr. Carpenter, any questions, please, all the favor?
Hi.
It's in the item number one, through public hearing for proposal of the law related to changing the city charter to create a position of city management.
Resolved, the common council directs the city clerk to publish public notice of a public hearing to be held at six PM October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. On the matter of adoption of a local law to amend the city charter for the purpose of creating the position of city management.
Um.
Some items, Mr. Carpenter. Yeah, it was very. Very question was, although I had a question on Zoom was to finance director along with that, so that was kind of discussed a little bit, and then there's one concern about having a finance director along with that position, so we're concerned about that, we're going with the situation, so there's a difference structure, yeah, I'm sure.
I I share that concern. I'd like to know what we're doing about the finance director. We can't be assured that we're going to always have a mayor, what's the kind of timing that you put in, I think it's good, I mean, part-time mayor. I think if we hire a full-time mayor and a full-time finance director and a full-time manager, we'll be pretty top-heavy, so if that's where we're headed, that's a concern. So we we have a part-time mayor, we're still beginning the finance director, and a lot of the accomplishments that we've achieved in recent years, been because we've gone after these big brands, like the Dior, we. We like the gateway project, those are all grant funded, so we really need somebody who understands their ability, friends.
So yeah, let me clarify a couple things, number one, the grants are not done by the finance administrator in any sense of the way, and nor were they being managed by him, or given at all, so that's what's been done by all sites. Companies are doing, well, it's Toma, for Nav, Homer Ave, we're doing it, working now, we're not, you know, it's all being done outside, engineering firms will do that to us for us, and that's all done outside, so we don't really handle that internally, nor does many other citizens in town. Some people have planners, may work on some of those issues, some of those grants, but most of the time, it's outside, people that are specialized in that. Yeah, so that's that's one that, that's not part of, that wouldn't be part of the administrator job, finance job or not, but first, and it's not to go toward a full-time mayor, that's exactly the opposite, is to go to, so that. You know, if you have, with the way it is right now, and the way it is with the finance director. If you have, wouldn't have that, is that the mayor is the acting person to go to all the departments and hear what's that, so that's difficult to do full-time, as the department has a, we've discussed in the. I think having a continuity and consistency within those departments to move being more of a managerial part, finance part's key, but the managerial part is more, because we can, we can staff, accounts. And we have the staff, we have the count, the count's payable, the accounting staff, we have a count position now, that's already there, and so we have the finance staff that's actually managing it, day to day, as it is currently, the daykeepers, a little bit of commitment, we need that, it's more an administrator to be able to negotiate contracts. To be able to discuss more of the issues that are day-to-day, issues to follow through with the other issues that have to happen, that need to happen. What the goals and objectives are here, and that was what was explained from those methods, exactly how that how that works and how it explains, we have a good matrix that explains how the department has worked with them, and how that dovetails together, and how it's still still important, so. It doesn't add to that, it wouldn't add another position, obviously, they have that financial background, but instead have somebody with a strong financial background, we're gonna do somebody, and then have little managerial experience. And I go back to Andy Namiato, he was an exception to the rule, he back in that day when I, he was more than, he was more than administrator, although he does finance, but when when we go to look out, we look for other people, now we're looking for the finance background, instead of the managerial background. And that's all this is doing, shipping it to doing a management background, because it's important to train, to do governmental management, that's what it's all. Does that make you understand better, so?
So, so. There's no plan to to address the finance side of that position directly, it's just gonna go on to the people who are already doing their accounts.
Go through the staffing levels that's there, and from there, that we rely on that manager, that he did restructuring anyway, we might wanna restructure. One sheet, I don't, yeah, I'm not, I don't want to pick on the perfect, it's a little bit of chaos, but then you might, you know, they're gonna, I assume they're gonna come back and wanna restructure, and look at it, and it's more effective, we're efficient, but that's the whole point, is to manage it and professionally manage, so it's done, governmental management is different.
You're saying that our previous finance director. Did not have anything to do with writing grants or securing grants or identifying grants for the city.
I I can't answer that he didn't have identifying them, but I know that other agencies wrote those tests, and they went after those. It's no different than the cameras, for example, you know, initiative was from my office to get to the cameras for the police department, that would be, but I didn't like that, and, you know, we put together, working with police department, as an outside agency, we're gonna get them back, and make that happen. I can take credit for that, but it wasn't.
And I'm just real quick on the grant, you know. Mentioned it for two, four, five years, number one, six years, we've always done the firm, we let the people to write grants to do it every day, but I'm like.
And, and the other part, I don't find out if the guy, the job would be writing grants. It's a distraction. And again, when you're managing twenty-nine million dollars, you know, at a certain point, now we establish the budget, now we do that. Now, you know, you have the day-to-day things that are done on a day-to-day basis that encompass people, but there's still the overlying change that needs to happen. So then how, you know, that needs to happen. So many of these would help manage that, keep that. There's things that come up day-to-day and some of the changes that we're trying to implement is slow. We're trying to put it together slower from the deep. And we discussed some of these changes, trying to work these things out, trying to bring ourselves to that next layer, next level. They would do that consistently. Continuously, not drop down, drop in, drop out. That's what makes it. Doesn't, it's not anymore complicated with that. It's not building another layer. It's not creating another layer. It's actually, it's actually creating that buffer between the mayor and the council and the department heads that they have a great way to vet. Then I get politicized, they're getting stuck, it's going down, which is kind of what they are now. We got the acts of, and that administrator acts as a buffer to do what's best for the city as a whole. That's what we do. There was one good, actually, bring that position. That's what I can do. And, and recognize someone that it's all a person too. You know what I mean? If you don't get the right person, it's a real problem. These people we talked to, they're straight on, they're awesome. Love. After I talked to them first time, I tried to get them, you know, but he's very loyal, he's very honest and that's appreciated. Well, the good part, but I think it's important to note that, that's an important part of making it all work. And in the past, we had some luck in getting some decent financial administration. But I think now that, now that there's actually forces local to be an administrator, we should take advantage of that. That's, that's rich. That's what the trains do. And we're at that big enough.
I don't think you've got that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was. Anybody else? Okay, move the question.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson is for the answer. Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Night.
Agenda item number two, determining the proposed actions are type two actions for purposes of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Resolved by the members of the common council of the city of Portland, New York as follows. Each of the type two projects constitutes a type two action as defined in the regulations, with no further action under the Seeker Act and the regulations it's required to. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
I get a motion. So just to clarify, I know this seems, the, the real descriptions in the next resolution, but this is a secret document that we have to prior to adopting that resolution. So the secret document is the same as law. Nothing that's going to be impacting environment, environmental conservation law. So that's what we have to go through the secret process for. So recognize that this is tied to the next revolution and you put.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number three, bond resolution of the city of Portland, New York, authorizing issuance of one, one, seven, one million serial bonds to finance across various parties.
Be resolved by the common council of the city of Portland, New York. It's follows and your permission, I'll read the several pages reading of the rest of the result.
I get a motion. So, so recognize that this is forcing equipment machinery that has been say, over, overused. Even at the end of years. It's, it's lifetime has been stretched. Yeah, thank you. We're in stretching it and, and whereas some of this stuff is super costly and super difficult to come up with, be able to do that. You know, so we have a lawnmower that's very, very expensive, which is in repair now and is, you know, ten years old, needs to be done. We have a haul truck, we have another dump truck for the wastewater and then also the fire truck as well as the vacuum. So the vacuum truck is the street sweeper, which I think is, if you've been behind it, very important and super helpful to have that done, your relationship that we've done. It leaves quite a trail and it's difficult and breaks down everything. So that's what the challenge with this.
May I ask how long it will take us to pay off the bond?
We'll know once we get those bond, bond resolutions back, what the interest rate is and what we can get them for, with the length of the period for this.
My concern is that we would be paying for something longer than it's of use for us.
They won't, they, they won't allow that on. They expected life expectancy is as long as less than that. So. Because people probably have started that. One state is around, to team you, probably some of it, yes, or less. Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number four, authorized issuance of a request for proposal for city facilities.
Resolved with the common council authorizes mayor Steve to issue a request for proposals to inventory and review city-owned facilities, provide an assessment of facility conditions, if need for repair, renovation, or replacement of facilities, recommendations for more efficient and effective use of city-owned facilities.
I'll move, I'll second. Now, I'm speculating. So on this facility study, I always hate to do studies because, especially if you're not going to fund them afterwards. But as we all recognize, no different than our equipment, our buildings, our infrastructure, it's our, you know, actually. Our department, for example, this department, this quarter, this month, we vacate it next year. You know, I've done a reassess myself, but I know that that would be necessary, somewhat of a conflict that we give my interest here. So I would like to get, we're R F P to get somebody to then, we really evaluate where we're overcrowded, we're undercrowded, we have a lot of buildings. Usually, you know, some issues with some of those, we have the wastewater plant, so we have tanks and we want to win, but we, we fire trucks. We have all kinds of different opportunities. We don't want to miss those opportunities. I would like to address those opportunities by doing R F P. Somebody else can then give us another opinion or aid if they to us to, from that, we would create one year, five year, or fifteen year, maybe more, to get our buildings back to its shape.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number five, authorized letter to the New York State Department of Transportation requesting a study of traffic safety on Route two eighty-one between West Main Street and Hill Press Drive.
Resolved with the common council authorizes mayor Steve to write a letter to New York State Department of Transportation, requesting the department conduct a study of traffic safety on Route two eighty-one between West Main Street and Hill Press Drive.
Councilmember Scott. Mister, Mr. Carpenter. So just real quick. So this is actually, I address this intersection every day, several times a day. We run outside of the city limits towards Homer and then make a left and walk to the hill where I'm at. You try to do that, somebody's turning to go down the opposite way, but me, and there's a tricky corner there. It's very, very dangerous. So neighbors up on the hill orchestrated this and they had probably thirty people they've gotten fired up in that neighborhood up there. And we really want to get this addressed. So I think it'd be appropriate for us to support that before somebody does get hit on accident. Everybody's trying to beat that racetrack to get to that single lane. We have the same problem on Topper Street coming into town as well. Mr. Peters is very surprised. We'd ask them to address that as well, as a verbal, but this I would like to do in writing based on this. And I know they're updating, which I was disappointed to get last week. I thought we should have updated my mayor's report. Was that after eight months, we finally got a response back from the state denying truck traffic. And we put that prior to, to genuine. She cited that they were now sending a very unpopular vote as well, but they stated that being a federal, there's three federal requirements that we would have. I don't, I'm not going to give up there. I want to argue back that, that doing local truck traffic is not cheating anybody to do a business. And they do have a more direct route, route to get to anyone than what they are. It's more economical and less fuel burning and, you know, less abusive on bridges that, you know, going across that bridge is city, you know, the city road. So I like to go back to that. I was saying, after eight months, it almost brought that back. So I was very disappointed. I'll share that with you, because that was a problem, right? Which is tricky. Scott, we go with that, which is, yeah. Let me know, because I moved the speed zone. Well, three responses. Yeah, it wasn't, it might be the sun. It was a different response. Well, I brought that up when we were doing it. We cut it short right in the city between Evergreen and Leland. Got out of the city or at least the Fisher Ave. It was just, everybody's got a question to turn right.
Yeah, I tried to stay.
Yeah, and it's tricky. Try to get in that left lane and then I get in that left lane and then somebody comes in and they're going to turn and go the other way. I can't believe, I'm gone. We're already committed. There's a left lane, there's a truck to the left. So we get to West Main. That was a terrible. Yeah, so it's tricky, but all of those things, that's like, if you had foresight, I went to those probably areas and it's, and now I believe, yeah. So any other questions? Alright, move the question, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number six, authorized contract with Syracuse Signal Systems Incorporated for traffic signal upgrade project additions in the intersection of Grant and North Main.
Resolved with the common council authorizes mayor Steve to execute a contract with Syracuse Signal Systems Incorporated for replacement of the traffic signal and associated work and equipment, including pedestrian crosswalks and Americans with disabilities add compliant crosswalk ramps in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars, eighty-four cents with work fencing in the next sixty days.
Again, this is, U B W's done a great job with this. I think they've got a lot there. And next, second, we're going to do with this parking lot and the U B R parking lot as well, stand that into the parking in the back and angle it so they could, you know, tremendous amount of work. So I appreciate that. So another great accomplishment to get this out of, out of our way and get it upgraded. So. Quick question, maybe Nick or who? Have you ever been in that parking lot when you leave, unless you go out and not do it, one of those pretty good, but if you leave the parking lot and enter in main, you get a flashing red light. From which, leaving.
Seventy.
So just some people think they can go, they just pull out because there's no green, red, green light falling out of that park. Or how they address that, are they going to stay the same and then say, when you red. Well, I know, but it's just, you never know which light you're getting turned green because you can't see the rest of the lights. Personally, I'd like to see it, but you need to enter, or if you're leaving that parking lot for that direction, you need to go south on main. If you want to go north, you should pull out to.
Right, or at.
Arthur, or Arthur Ave.
It's blinking red means stop, but then go.
Right, yeah, yeah. Just, I'd see a lot of, maybe it's, I was cheap with here, you look up to it. I don't really access it, it's kind of there. It seems to both one, but that's just my two cents. It's just my two cents. I mean, it's, yeah. Is that, would that be considered a state rule at that point, right? No, that's all, that's all, that's a good idea to dump them, they're going south, north, to go over Arthur now, or maybe both. I don't know, trying to open up a ten or one, trying to get a convenient store, but it's just, seven eleven has enough problems for where we are. Well, we had, you said that, well, I didn't want to be talking about. Like you said, we're addressing it and we're not having, it's, okay. Daily phone calls is rather a contest over there. Of course, I don't want to see another empty building, but ideally would make it a four-way intersection. You take a piece of that, that's probably more than four because there, well, you could buy an Arcer with, buying Arcer with seven eleven. Right now, it's tough when you make a right turn, the only, in fact, make a left on that. I don't know, maybe something should be addressed before we go further on this. Maybe, maybe make it no longer game. And if that.
Like you said, that on, on Arthur, that's the problem. Yeah, we're turning right off of Arthur on a North Main, then they're turning left into the intersection that has the red light coming the opposite direction. Yeah. So we put a no right on red on Arthur, but I think people are still, don't do that.
Is it insane to think that? Their entry wasn't there, it's on the side, I don't, there's three ways in and out of that little party. But it's nice that they're assuming that in. Just move the bus. We can take a look. Maybe for a traffic light, there's sort of turns. Just like. Anyway, I'd say, yeah, anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Name.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number seven, Southland Recognized Donations to the Portland Fire Department.
Resolved with the common council accepts the donation listed below and appropriates funds to the Portland Fire Department donation account earmarked for A E D replacement. Donation from Friendly Activity Association, which is a friendship house at thirteen Leon Ave and about two hundred and fifty dollars. We account T E zero zero two zero four four.
Yeah, so the fire department's done a great job. Chief Reynolds is not here to give them the recognition, but they've been running out. Much appreciated of it. Been very helpful to them. We're currently working on a program to maybe, maybe doing something community-wide, every Thursday, but the boss, the increase of boss of fuel and food and everything for everybody else we're looking to do, workable, food bank, to get it to something. So we're stationed on that, but if we do do that, we'll probably, we'll go to each door at different times and have pickups and different boards for everybody who's available to send the bus. So we're working on that right now. So Chief Reynolds is bringing that instrumental in making that happen. So we'll be more stationed for that, we'll be making more.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
Agenda item number eight, authorized emergency repair on apron of the fire department station headquarters.
Resolved with the common council authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with mid-state basement authorities for repairs to the front apron of headquarters for the total amount of four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, with funding coming from fire department budget line A three, four, one, zero, dash, five, four, zero, five, zero, zero, which shall be reimbursed from a contingency account.
Mr. Carpenter. I was down today, taking a look in another little area and I got to see a vehicle pull over that apron.
I was down today, taking a look in another little area, and, uh, I got to see a vehicle pull over that apron. Anybody hasn't seen a vehicle pull over that apron? We know exactly why we're voting yes to fix that, it shifts, it was only a car. But those trucks going in and out of there, the report that I'm getting, how far it moves, is ridiculous and unsafe. I'm glad we're doing this right away, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll talk to you about the other part, I took a look at today, but I, I got to see an SUV back up and pull out. And you can watch the apron move, very unsafe. You know, God forbid, people hustling and trying to get stuff done with, you know, car, trucks pulling out, and somebody's running to jump on a truck, and, I mean, it, it moves. It's substantial.
Makes it sound really bad.
When I heard it moved, I thought I was gonna see this. It moves, it rocks.
This is our first hit in contingency, so I guess it's all right. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Solomon.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Councilmember Michaels.
Hi.
We've got a, states up for the record, I write in number six, about the traffic light. Now, we're just, they voted no, not because of the ABA lights, we need it, I just wanna make that clear.
No, I understand, you might have got, we recognize it, the light, and we'll be looking at it, it's a great point. I just didn't want the ABA people to know.
No worries. Coverage, thank you.
Thank you.
Feel them all times.
One, I'm not under, number nine, right?
Well, I'm the nine.
Agenda item number nine, authorized repair of army floor.
Resolved that the common council authorizes the mayor to enter into agreement with mid-state basement authorities for repairs to the volunteer firefighters meeting room four. For the total amount of five hundred and twenty eight dollars, seventy five cents, with funding from, from, coming from. Fire, the, fire department budget line eight, three, four, one, zero, five, four, zero, five, zero, zero, which shall be reimbursed from a contingency account.
Beckwith. Solomon. Uh, yeah, so, um, my, this, we were at the army the other day, uh, for meeting, in the volunteers' room, there's a drop off. So, I wanna talk to the chief about, possibly doing something different, but this is the world's top seven pair, so.
And we wanna put a limit on this, instead of it's kept in at five twenty eight. It may come in over, depending on.
How to do it right, you gotta cut it out, and you don't just pour it to the zero.
Well, you go with more than that, if they, yeah, swap to the room.
So I'll explain it a little bit better, I think there used to be a cooler in that, but that's my nearest best guess. And the way it was tapered from, cooler was in the room, and was dropped, set in the floor, so it was level with the floor, so there's an inch and a half drop. And, and by eye, with the center blocks, it looks like it's level, the perimeter of the room. So, uh, my thought was, do itself up the concrete, they were gonna grind that inch and a half down as a taper, I don't know if that's really the best solution. And it created another trick, so, we're gonna talk about that, we'll, we'll, we'll make some changes to this, we'll come back, but it's still, it's, it needs to be addressed. And our volunteers, we need to make it as nice as we can. Be, hopefully, table this until we get an edit, we can, uh, we can do that. Also, uh, our subdivision. And, uh, second that. Was in favor. We'll take that to the next, we insert. Have that against your volume. Discussion, uh, item number one, uh, for the school, so, that's cool, planning, and that was down this week, so they plan maybe to try to meet again on Monday. I'm gonna address that, especially if you have any, you know, something back. Town and gown, uh, meeting was to be, uh, that was, uh, most home, somebody can say that every Monday. But I did meet with the student government association yesterday, which is, uh, which is great to meet them one on one, um, and have a nice dialogue, talk about, they wanna do a cross event. Together, with the city and, um, and they also talked, well, we talked about how we can help them, and how, uh, they can help us. So, uh, it was, it creates a little bit of a leading government body, we, uh, so we had a nice discussion, uh, yesterday for a little bit of time, and, uh. Uh, so I'm very excited about that, my intern is on that, so that's a great connection to have, so this will be, uh, a good, good way to move forward, so I think between that and town. Down committee, I think I'm pretty excited about the possibilities for that. Rental housing, so many update at my committee, uh, so we've had several of those meetings, uh. We've had some great, uh, people, some, uh, there's some great people that we introduced to their firehouse, uh, which is great, there's some strong personalities in the room. Uh, they're making some progress, and, uh, that meeting is, I do it tomorrow, right? Tomorrow, uh, so that's, that's something on, a little bit later for some people that can make it better, uh, but that's, uh, that's moving on, and, uh. We're looking at the legal requirements with AJ tomorrow, and move that, uh, moving that towards a positive direction.
Mr. Mayor, I was asked why there are only two homeowners on that, and everybody else is, uh, missing.
Uh, there's actually three homeowners, there's street residents that are on that, and, uh.
And how many are on the, total?
Um. I went right up top, I had six, eight, something like that. So, yeah, so the representative was from, we got up from, for different districts, so we got the impact of the growing difference, that's what we talked about originally. Maple half, that, all the way around, and then also try to get them from Toppet Street side up on the hill, so.
James Street.
From James Street.
I'd like to correct the record with the person who you think to lose, so I really love seeing the names of the people who were.
Yeah, so the rest of our street landlords.
There's one who's not a student, but is a manual, right, yeah.
Yeah, so we tried, we did an, all the diversity and then some from the education, and then publicly, based on recognition from this court.
Right.
So I didn't, I didn't refuse any, I would do one, but we're there. Okay, so that's, that's where that came from. Um, and I didn't really know these people before, they're powerhouses, I appreciate that, so that's awesome. Uh, so it's been going very long, nobody's afraid to talk, so that's, that's always when it comes out the best, when that, when you get that way, and everybody's in staff, so that's. The second part, well, probably the first part. Yeah, yeah. Yes. Yeah, the names are all listed on that, yeah. It's, Robin, Robin will send that to me, thank you. Anything else, but, um, I'd just like to, the next meeting, the anniversary, the wish, the statement, wish, we hold off on those awards for the second meeting, the next month. Police sits on a radio, is that, um, yeah, that's my question, thank you. Yeah, congratulations on that, congratulations. All right, anybody else have anything else? All right, so, uh, will she do the journey? Back with Solomon, all's a favor.
Hi.
Jerry, thank you.